All right, so first item on the agenda, the 2324 Quaybog Regional Middle High School Handbook. You are up. Mr. Hanfield, you're up. I guess introductions are gonna come after the fact, but...
Oh, no, you guys stand up in front. I'd be happy to do that as well.
Good evening, everyone. So before you tonight, with the student handbooks, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just don't wanna talk out of turn here. Introductions and things like that. Sure, so in your packets this evening, I believe you have proposed student handbook changes. No, you do not, okay, I apologize. So for our student handbooks, we are looking at just cleaning up the language over the last several years after going through them this week. Two of the notable policies that are in there would be revision of the dress code to just make it conform in a fashion that is representative of kind of today's day and age, I guess would be the way to say it, for all of our students. And then the second piece that would be notable would be cellphone policy. We currently have one in the seventh grade. We're looking to bring that from seventh grade across all grades. And kind of the outline of that policy, because cellphones are definitely a hot-button topic, I'm sure as you've heard on the news and even probably discussed here. We're looking at a away-for-the-day policy. We don't necessarily subscribe to the fact that we have to have them be removed entirely. We want to be able to have our students learn how to use them responsibly and enlist the faculty and administration support to do that. So what we're proposing is a cellphone policy that will have students, they'll be able to use their cellphones obviously before school, between classes, lunchtime, and any time that teachers feel that it's appropriate for educational purposes. Other than that, it's what we're calling away-for-the-day. We don't expect to see them in classrooms. That also includes wearables, which would be earphones or anything that would be construed as, you know, kind of an extension of the cellphone. There's a multiple-layered offense kind of policy where the teacher deals with it the first time, then it's referred to Mr. Lavell, who you'll meet later this evening, and then if we have to enlist the assistance of parents, we'll do so. It's our recommendation that we go that way first, and if we have to become more restrictive, we would do that. But as I said a little bit ago, we really try not, or at least I try not to, go zero to 100. I like to try kind of a measured, you know, approach and response and see what happens. So that's really it, everything else is the same. We've updated dates, names, things of that nature.
Anybody have any questions? Dustin, two changes on the high school year handbook. Dress code's been modernized and cellphone policy, which you just heard. So that's it. Other than that, I think we've done a pretty good job with our handbooks over the years, you know, so... Maybe, I'll just speak as a parent, you know, that with the one-to-one technology, I mean, there's no need for kids to use their cellphones. I know when my oldest was here, they didn't have that technology where every student had computers, so they were kind of required to use their phones, you know, to search online for things like that in the classroom, but now I don't see the need, so... Obviously, if it's an emergency, parent can call the main office, the main office can call the teacher, you know, all that stuff.
And I agree with that wholeheartedly. I think for us, we were, in addition to kind of taking a measured approach and trying to foster the idea of responsible usage and helping kids learn that skill, we were also concerned with the amount of volume it would put on the main office if we funneled everything through a singular person for 500 and some odd kids. You know, there's a lot of things that go on in the lives of our kids every day. So we felt that if we gave kids an opportunity, whether it be, you know, to check in with mom and dad, to, you know, whether it's work-related, sports-related, you know, don't forget your doc's appointment, et cetera, et cetera. You know, our kids still have that opportunity. We also, you know, wanna provide them the opportunity during lunch or whatever too, you know, to have some downtime. But we'll see how it goes. If we find that, you know, we'll talk about this with the kids when we meet them Wednesday. We'll explain this to them and let them know that kind of the ball's in their court, you know, what we're trying to do, and, you know, we'll see what happens. And like I said, if we need to go, you know, after a month or so and we need to revisit, then, you know, we have the latitude to do that. But I want them to understand and families to understand that we're coming in and trying to be reasonable and responsible in kind of our approach. You know, you see a lot of policies in place where it's, you know, put 'em in a pouch, put 'em here, put 'em there. The reality of it is, they'll find a second phone, they have their Apple Watches, et cetera, et cetera, and you've spent a lot of money, you know, trying to, you know, well-intentioned, but you've spent a lot of money on something that they're just gonna find the workaround. You know, so, and if we were that age, we probably would too. That's why, you know, this is another reason why we're gonna see if, you know, how this works.
Okay. All right, again, does anybody have any questions?
That's what I'm saying, I think it's a great approach.
Thank you.
Because one of the things that, from a parent as well, over the years, especially from sports or activities that get changed, usually it's either them telling us or we're telling them, so...
Yes, until we get to the point where the communication's as good as where it needs to be, I think having this approach really does help, especially from the parent's perspective.
All right, with no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 202324 Quaybog Regional Middle High School Handbook as outlined.
Second.
Second. We got Megan. Motion made, second, any further discussions? All in favor? Opposed, extensions, and... Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Slattery, who's the provost, you guys are up now. And don't let him just like start the, like, you know, you don't have, you can, I know you guys are, you guys are old at it this year, you should stand in and...
So, thank you, good evening, everyone. So what we did is, we met with our school councils this past school year to sort of look at the handbook from a parent perspective, because it was a lot of wordiness and a lot of things were cut and pasted in over the years and things weren't taken out. So we took the liberty to sort of change some language, update it, make it more modernized. So you already have this, yes? Oh, it'll be shared out, okay. So there's a lot of changes, I'm not gonna go through every single one. Just like, for example, withdrawing a student, we just changed the language to make it sound, you know, less wordy. There was a lot of paragraphs that just were run-on sentences and communication, parking, dismissal, just cleaned up some of the formatting. Bus dismissal, just changed some of the language. Early dismissals, you know, there was a huge paragraph like this, and we just kinda brought it down to like four sentences instead of that. And then the absentee policy, which was gigantic, we took that, we edited it and put it into, you know, some more usable, more friendly, user-friendly formatting. And then report card academic status report dates is just updated every year. Skateboards, oh... Yeah, so this one was hysterical, you have to hear this, right? So skateboards and roller skates along with the following items are not to be brought to school. Radio, CD players, boom boxes, Walkman, handheld video games, Giga Pets, Barbies and such. So we sort of updated it just a little bit, just to reflect, you know, what we do now. But, you know, and then there was language that Dr. Esposito asked us to put in about the homeless students, which was updated, as well as the code of conduct and progressive discipline through the state laws. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Any thoughts, any questions?
Anybody have any further questions?
Yes, yep.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 202324 Elementary School Handbook as outlined.
Sued.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, extensions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Superintendent Duff?
So I have two introductions. Our first introduction will be the new assistant principal at Quaybog Regional Middle High School, Mr. Mike Lavell. Mike comes with us with many years of experience as an assistant principal, most recently noted at Oxford Public Schools in the middle school as vice principal for five years there. Mike, he'll talk to you a little bit, but he's from Ludlow, which is a little bit closer to Quaybog than Oxford was. Mike is very student-oriented, which is great, and I think that is gonna be a great balance with Principal Lavell. But Assistant Principal Lavell is here tonight, introduce himself.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Duff. So I'm Mike Lavell, I'm the assistant principal here at Quaybog Regional. Like Steve said, I'm coming from Oxford for the past five years. I've been assistant principal here in the Commonwealth for the past 13, so I'm a 13-years veteran in the seat. Prior to that, I taught in my hometown, Ludlow. I live over there with my wife and my daughter, Jamison, and I was a teacher for eight years, the middle school level for history. So coming here, I think, you know, was one of those things where I didn't wanna get closer to home, but when I came here and I interviewed and I met the people and I met the, you know, kind of the faculty members that were here, I saw the superintendent for two hours, usually as assistant principal, they're trying to get you in and out as fast as you can, and you kind of move around that way. Steve said, two hours, we walked the building, we went through the whole thing, Mr. Hanfield as well. I felt really good about, you know, everything that was going on here. There's some things that, and opportunities here for our students that all the different districts are looking to get. We already have the infrastructure, we already have it here, and it's just one of those things where I think I could add a really positive, you know, kind of vibe to the building and things and bring my level of expertise here as well. So I'm really happy to be here, I am closer to home, so I'm happy about that too, and we'll go from there.
Welcome. Anybody have any questions? So I can just say that, you know, over the course of the summer, I've been, I've been in and out, you know, either talking to Mr. Duff or Mr. Hanfield, and I've had the opportunity to meet Mike and, you know, some of the other administrators. I know we're gonna talk to Chris in a few seconds and Kirsten and everything like that. Like, I just gotta say, I mean, I'm always excited for the new year to start. I'm really excited for this year to start. Outside of Superintendent Duff and outside of our elementary school principals, our administration in the middle high school has 99 years of experience. So, like, we don't have green people here. They may be green to Quaybog, but they know what they're doing, and I'm really excited to see what's gonna happen this year, so... Welcome.
Thank you.
So my next introduction is our new director of technology, Chris LeJoy. Chris joins us from the Auburn School District, where he was a teacher of technology and various other subjects for 19 years. Chris has come in and he's set the ground running. It's gonna be nice to have Chris's ability to interact with teachers and to work with technology in your classroom, as well as balance the needs of, you know, the internet and safety and so forth. So of course, as Chris has come in, he's learned quite a bit in his first month and a half. So we welcome you, Chris.
Thank you.
And we open to any questions that anybody may have in the room.
Great.
So Jay's our resident school committee tech guy, so...
Yeah, we can talk at some point.
He'll talk the same thing, which is you do, so...
Yeah, I'm very excited about starting in Quaybog. I actually lived in Warren for 13 years, so I'm very familiar with the community. I loved it when we lived out here. Like I said, I'm excited for this job. I'm hoping to take my 19 years as an educator and then prior to that as a corporate IT worker and really help all of our stakeholders achieve the most we can with our technology and build upon that, so...
Thanks. Again, I'll say the same thing about Chris. I mean, I came in and started meeting with him, and he's not even like bringing his box into his desk yet. He's like already talking about the things that need to be changed and updated and locked down and secured and all of that stuff, so again, I think I'm...
I would be curious to see what your evaluation looks after, you know, when you first came in, just out of conversations we've had in the past, so... It's more curiosity than anything else.
Sure, yeah.
If you need any help, love, you know?
I definitely will, thank you.
Careful what you wish for, Jay. All right, welcome, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, I have set up bi-weekly meetings with town administrator Ferrera from Warren. I'll be meeting with him once every two weeks. I'll also be attending monthly board of selectmen meetings, just to give them an update on some of the things that are going around on the school. I have been in contact with town administrator Sam Angelo from the town of Westbrookfield, and I will be setting meetings up with him so that I can keep Westbrookfield abreast of what's going on at Quaybog as well, as well as the elementary buildings. Part of my goals, when I present my goals in October, will be communication and collaboration within the towns to help facilitate the budget process, as well as keep the town a processless model in the school district. So I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware that I was meeting with them on a bi-weekly basis at this point. New teacher orientation happened today. This room was filled with energy and excitement from the new teachers that are coming into the district, whether new veteran teachers or new new teachers. Our mentor program, Just Harder, does a spectacular job with that new mentor program. If you're new to the district, perhaps professional teacher status in the district, typically you get about 25 hours of mentoring, just how does Quaybog work. Or if you're a new new teacher, you get 50 hours for the first year, and then you get 25 hours for the second year. The support that our veteran teachers give our new incoming teachers is phenomenal. Mr. Schwenker was here this morning, as was Chief Mobat and Lieutenant over in the Warren Police Department to go over our ALICE protocols with our new teachers. It was spectacular that. So that was our new teacher update. Tomorrow, we have our faculty workshop. One of the hard problems with starting school before, where we're at, starting school before Labor Day, is not a lot of time between getting buildings ready and school starting, so the teachers have been doing announcing the jobs, or coming in on their days off to make sure that their classrooms are set up, because they wanna be ready to roll on Wednesday when the kids come in. Tomorrow's faculty workshop, we'll have staff here from 8 to 11. And then we have a lunch provided by Mrs. Smola, and then there's building-based agendas in the afternoon with PD, RST, math, and other activities for the elementary buildings, as well as our special education department having time to work on IEPs and things like that with our paraprofessionals and our spec teachers. So we are excited for faculty to be back in the building tomorrow, even more excited for students to return to us on Wednesday. Free breakfast and lunch update, Governor Haley has made this a permanent, permanent for all of Massachusetts, where the eighth state within the United States, to make free breakfast and lunch available from this point moving forward. We still will count it towards a community eligibility provision, which allows us to get grant money, which is helpful. We've been talking in the building budget committees about adding a freezer outside of the middle school cafeteria, because we have an issue with having a surplus of food. That's what the state's looking for us to add. And because of the job that Mrs. Nanschel has been doing with the funds, we're able to fund that through our food service department, which is super helpful in terms of not relying on the towns to help support those initiatives. So Mrs. has been doing a great job of that, and we will continue with the free breakfast and lunch program. An update on the WCES HVAC in Green Community Project.
Point of sale system.
Oh, oh yeah, point of sales. So in order for us to have the community eligibility provision, we have to have a point-of-sale system that the state recognizes, and kind of like when we went from NCAS to NCAS Maxi-Pearson, the state continuously updates which systems that they require the school districts or allow school districts to use. We were using Titan, and that is no longer a recognized vendor through the state of Massachusetts. So now we need to move to School Cafe, which brings about a $9,000 cost with it. So when we talk to the town and other folks about unfunded mandates, this is one of those unfunded mandates where the state's telling us that we have to use a specific vendor, and it's up to the district in order for the district to be able to be in compliance with what the state regulations are. They don't provide us the funding for that. We have to pay the $9,000 to get a point-of-sales, point-of-sales vendor in order to communicate with the state effectively. So Mr. LeJoy, one of the, another initiative that Mr. LeJoy had to figure out was how that was gonna interact with what we currently have for technology and different windows, Windows 11 and 10 and 7. So it's been kind of a challenge for Chris, but he's figured it out, and we're ready for our students to come in with a vendor assistant School Cafe on Wednesday. Chris, thank you.
Before you move to the next one, so I have a question. So if a student has a current balance now, does that balance transfer over to the new point-of-sale system?
We don't have any students with balances at this point.
Oh, no? Okay. I thought some of the kids, like, if they wanted like an extra lunch or ice cream or something like that, they...
They can't charge the town.
Oh, it's cash.
It's cashing for that, yep.
Never mind. If you answered the question.
That's been one of the nice parts about having free breakfast and lunch, is that it reduces lacking money and not kids having the ability to have food. We ran into that probably five or six years ago, where there were different sandwiches that were offered for kids that didn't have the funding, but that's no longer in the ship, which is great for kids and great for the food service department.
Can I ask you a question about that, just going back? If we're offering free breakfast and lunch, what is the point of sale for food items?
So we still have to calculate the number of breakfast and lunch that we distribute. And we can reimburse based upon the number of breakfast and lunch that we distribute each day.
Okay, so if...
It communicates with the state to say these are the number of breakfast and lunches that we distributed that day. If you can't have that level of communication to the state, then we will be in that position most.
Okay, so the state's making us pay for something to keep track of what they're providing to us for free?
Correct.
Makes sense?
Update on the WCES HVAC Green Community Project. That project is approximately four to five weeks behind schedule. We were told that it would be completed prior to the beginning of school. The pipe titters were supposed to be in the last week of July, at latest, early, at latest, the first week of August. The pipe titters just got into the building on Tuesday of last week, so we are looking at a completion date of anywhere from four to six weeks from here moving forward. Mr. Estrel and I, Mr. Slattery, custodial staff at Long County Elementary School, met with Patrick Mahomes from Guardian, as well as Josh, who's the foreperson for Guardian on the job, and we laid some groundwork for them moving forward. They have to move to second shift. The entire building has to be bucked up each day. Right now, we're in the process of going through, making sure that all the ceiling panels are replaced. We gave them mechanical room as a stadium area for them to keep their equipment, but with away from kids. They are going to go from 4 to 12, it's gonna be the second shift, so that we have enough time to get the students out of the building. And then we, there's about 15 to 20 kids, I think we decided, Mr. Slattery, that would be in the building throughout the school program for the first couple of weeks. Our custodial staff, and a huge shout-out to them, are willing to switch their shift instead of going from 2:30, or 2 to 10, they're gonna go from 4 to 12 for the first week, because we wanna make sure that we have adequate coverage in there, which is really, you know, Mike, Mike Reynolds and Kenny Mondell said when we were meeting with us, they offered to do that, to make sure that there was coverage there, that they could secure the building, and make sure that they got done as much as possible. So they have about 75 valves that they have to replace, or a few that have to be soldered, so there'll be a fire watch. Mr. Jakes will take care of that, because he's rather fond of that. So we're hoping to have this completed at latest, the first week of October. The town of Warren is aware of this, I have been in communication with Mr. Ferrera, sent a couple of emails, as well as we had a meeting with him about three weeks ago at Warren, who was unable to attend Friday's meeting as he had a Friday meeting in God. So that's the update on the each of that.
Okay.
Westbrookfield Green Community Grant, Mr. Westbrookfield is a Green community. We did meet with representatives from, representatives from National Grid with, about three weeks ago, and they talked about a potential lighting upgrade project for the town of, for Westbrookfield Elementary through the town of Westbrookfield. In the packet, you will find that I did sign an application for them to go ahead and give us a cost of what it would cost in order to put that project together. Mr. Estrel and I will also be meeting with the representative from National Grid to look at other opportunities that we may have in terms of Green Community Grant with the building envelope. For Westbrookfield, as we know, there's some drafty areas, I'll say, and some things that are going on that we think that if we meet with them in terms of the energy savings, that we may be able to find some other opportunities to save some money and fix the energy of the community. So thank you to the town of Westbrookfield for including Westbrookfield Elementary School in that, and we will keep you updated as that process moves forward. Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative, I have a next meeting on September 15. As you know, the collaborative is our out-of-district placement that we're a member town of, and they're located in that in Southridge, and we have monthly board meetings that I was voted in to be the representative for the school district, so I'd like to know that that meeting is coming up on September 15. And then the disclosure with parents of conflict of interest, I need to disclose as the superintendent of schools that my wife works in the district, so I have a disclosure form, which is through general laws 268A, 20 and 23B and 3. It's just a disclosure that I need to turn over to the chairman of the school committee, there's no vote on it, but I am turning this over to inform you that my wife is a member, is an employee of Quaybog Regional School.
Okay. And we will put this in your file, and I think this is something I have to do every year too, so... Okay.
Mr. Duff, a question for the lighting potential Green Communities. Is that gonna be both indoor and outdoor?
Indoor to start, they did look at outdoor, but indoor to start. That's where the primary focus was.
Thank you.
I think our outdoor lights at the elementary schools were upgraded, I don't know, a number of years ago. Could have, could have been one, could have been 10. It all blurs together. But I know that both Warren and Westbrookfield Elementary Schools were upgraded, as in, as the parking lot here was too, so... I'm not sure, I remember exactly when that was. Jay, you know when that was? Remember that?
18?
It was.
17, 18, maybe?
About five, six years ago. So I mean, it's new technology, like the old mercury bulbs that used to be there, but yeah, I mean, I'm sure if, you know, there's any additional savings, we'll, we'll get those too, so... All right. Just a couple minutes to approve. We have regular meeting minutes of June 26. Anybody has any questions, changes, subtractions, additions? We can't blame Miss Courtney on it, 'cause she wasn't here, I did them, so... Hearing none, anybody besides Matt and Dustin wanna entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June 26.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, extensions, two. Okay. We have our Arizona Brief Meeting of June 29. Everybody has any questions? Admissions, subtractions? It's gonna be Jay, Sarah, or Megan?
I'll make a motion to approve the... From June 26?
It was a meeting after town, after town meeting. It's like, why didn't we have one three days later? To approve the, approve the votes. All right, I have a motion, and Megan, do you second? Motion made, second, any further discussion? Not all.
Favor.
Opposed, extensions, three. And then we have regular meeting minutes of July 24. Cindy, on the second page, there's three motions. So under new business, the first motion to appoint Superintendent Duff as the Southern Wester County representative, Griffin is with a G. So there's, there's three of them, so there's that motion, there's the motion by Craig and seconded by Brian to do the ferry beach trip, and then the motion to adjourn, it's all there with a G. As he says, it works very hard for those G's, so... But that's all I saw on that, so... Everybody see's any other changes? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty-fourth.
Make a motion to approve those changes.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Megan. Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, resentions.
Sorry, I can't vote, I have to stand.
Yeah, resposure, yeah, six oh two. Okay. All right. In your packet, we have a few things, the district improvement plan, which we'll talk about in New Business, some school committee documentations, the Mass Safe incentive application that Superintendent Duff said, some of the welcome letters to, to the community. I do have to say, I read, I read all three welcome letters, and I, I liked all of them. One of the things that I think I was having a comment with somebody earlier today was, and it does kind of tie into the district improvement plan later on in the year, I'd like to see like a, I don't know whether we can do it, I don't know if we can just do it on the webpage, or if we can do it through the monthly newsletter, but like, key activities that take place in the community, you know, this past weekend, the Warren Elementary PTO did a carnival, and Megan was there, Megan was there because she has kids at the school, I didn't know anything about it. You weren't there? I saw, I saw pictures, it looked like you.
It was me.
Anyway, I saw it on a crazy book, I saw it after the fact, and I was like, you know, some of those things, I mean, not that we would go to them, but I think as the school committee, it would be nice to know that these activities are taking place within our community, so I don't know if there's any way that we can figure out a way to put together some kind of a, you know, community calendar of sorts, so I think that'll be a, a topic of specialness, Superintendent Duff, so. And then we did have a letter from Mr. Capaco, which I'm not sure if he's going to want to address later on in the public comments or not, but that was in the packet as well. We don't have any financial business matters, considering the fiscal year just started, and we're still in good shape, so.
What about the community calendar?
Yeah.
The student advisory council, and the two kids that come, the student now to the school today.
Yep.
Came to mind, maybe something extra for them or something?
Absolutely. Okay. All right, subcommittee updates. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, well, Dr. Mainsfield's financial, on my finger, isn't taken. There's not much to talk about from, from change, right? We, we did meet on August fourteenth, went over, it was a relatively quick meeting, went over some of the things of where we're at from the FY twenty-four budget, and really went over the concept. Mr. Duff gave us the info on how the transition went from basically the books transitioned from twenty-three to twenty-four. We had a role update, talked a little bit about chapter seventy-four. We talked about closing out FY twenty-three as part of that transition, and starting to prepare the end of year information. Again, we talked a bit already about the food service update, we went a little bit more detailed, a little bit of the numbers, which was very, very good. Again, I think we talked about Mrs. Mansfield and that as well, about how, what a great job is being done over there, and how much it supports not just the, the kids, but the entire school district with what's being done. A little of the special education update, some changes that we were dealing with, and then we just talked about the new people that we're working with, the EMS. The next meeting is September eleventh, here, around six thirty.
Okay. Sarah, personnel, no update?
Yeah, we have an update, and at this point, we don't have any future meetings scheduled because we don't need any.
I'll see Greg, no update?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Duff if he had given any thought to, sorry, which I was by, any thought to when we like to schedule our policy meeting for discussing like social media and all that wonderful stuff?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is get this couple of weeks behind us, and then go ahead, and I think that that's something that we definitely need to look at.
Still thinking like October, November, time?
Yeah, I would say October, that way it'll give us enough time, and we'll start having some of our school council meetings as well, because there might be some good input from some community members as well.
So that's my update, thank you, Mr. Duff.
I'll go, I'll go, it's about mid-September, we said two weeks. All right, building subcommittee, Mr. Burgess is not there, but basically went over some of the items that we were talking about here. The Westbrookfield Elementary sinkholes is, is quite an issue, so I know the town is involved in that, so that's, that's something that's going to need to be addressed rather soon. There was a roof leak at Westbrookfield Elementary that got repaired, the HVAC update at Warren Elementary, the Green Communities incentive at Westbrookfield. I do know that both Westbrookfield and Warren Community Elementary had some, some, I won't say concrete work, because it was concrete removal and asphalt work for some new sidewalks leading into the building, which looked fantastic and eliminates so many trip hazards, so I'm looking forward to see, one of the kids notice on Wednesday when they come in, and I'm sure they will, because they're pretty observant, and two, if they have any comments to, to make about it, you know, like, what happened to all the cracks, you know? Security cameras have been, I think, almost all gone, we've been waiting on one or two, and then just basically some building updates as to what the custodial staff has, has been doing all summer, so. The next meeting is September eleventh, at six o'clock, here in the Innovation Center. That's building. Regional Agreement Amendment Committee has not met since the last meeting. The changes that were made went to North Brookfield's legal counsel. North Brookfield's legal counsel has sent it back to the North Brookfield School Committee, who is looking to review it. I keep asking them if they've reviewed it, they have not yet set a date to meet with their legal counsel to go over the changes prior to them bringing it back to the rack, so next meeting is still to be determined, so. District Improvement Plan, New Business. I said this would have been a good opportunity to try the new Promethium board. Also, I was talking to Travis, and he's going to link his, his hand right into it, so it will be like him taking a picture of it, it'll go away to feed, so, everything's going to be, going to be pretty neat, so. Those are all the conversations I had with Mr. Duff. Yeah, it'll probably, it'll be easier for us to see, it'll be easier for people at home to see, I'm sure.
So as you know, the district improvement plan traditionally has been a one-year plan, and we outlined the goals for that upcoming school year. We did a one-year district improvement plan again this year, however, what we have found over time is that we have a lot of goals that overlap from year to year, so for example, we have the wonders curriculum that we've been implementing for three years, and each year we do a new, we do the same plan based upon the implementation of the wonders program. So as administrative team, what we spoke about this year is moving forward, beyond this current school year, is looking at building the one to three-year district improvement plan, so this year, Warren, Westbrookfield Elementary Schools will be, their MAP programs will be coming to an end of the term, but they have those programs, where they're two separate programs, so we'll start looking at some of the program that we have with the ELA, with the reading series in the elementary building, which is a three-year project, so we'll look at building a district improvement plan that has benchmarks, very similar to the benchmarks that we have in our district improvement plan, but it'll be a year one, a year two, and a year three. So the law of our district improvement plan, with the help of Principal Handel, Principal Provost, and Principal Slattery, and Director of Student Services, Dr. Esposito was talking about multi-tiered student support, where we're starting to look at our early intervention teams, which are also referred to over time as approved for all teams for special education, talking about how we can intervene with our students with different tier levels of support, so that we can prevent our students from being referred to special education, whether where your teachers can start to look at what levels of support's going to be put into place, particularly post-COVID, as we know, there's been quite a dip in what's been going on with reading levels, typically at the younger ages, so a lot of our district improvement plan has to do with multi-tiered goals, student support systems to help our students move forward. In addition to that, we're very fortunate to have the Assistant Superintendent of Development, Madam Smola, who has got the grant for us to help with special education services at book grades one, two level, where we're going to have, hopefully have an additional special education teacher, which is certainly something that's self-immiting, to help our youngest readers learn in the co-education environment. So our core practice, oh, I'm on to the floor, I'm sorry. And you have this in your, in your packet as well, but I will read it to you as we go. So our, our first goal is purposeful instructional practice, will, will employ instructional practices that promote a high level of student engagement and achievement. What we're seeing when we do our walk routes, even with the TNTP, which is at the elementary building, we're looking for that high level of engagement when we cross routes with some of that higher-order questioning, and our goal is to establish and improve high-quality instructional practices in all classrooms, which I think is why we come to work every day. We're going to target planning within all subjects that promote rigor and higher, higher-order thinking. Thinking, this will include embedding culturally responsive and learning-centered approaches, developing used common assessments. So what we have found, and this is the nice part about having Mr. Slattery, Ms. Provost, and Principal Handel, is we found that we don't have common assessments across all levels, where we're looking at how we assess our students, our one common assessment is NCAS, which is a snapshot from grades three, four, five, six, eight, and N. We're missing a gap, and that should be informing all of our decisions, so what we've decided as administrative team is to start looking at, it's, it's a MAPS assessment, where we're looking at three measured benchmarks, the first, middle, and end, that we're going to use in kindergarten and math grade. So every student has the exact same assessment, so we're looking at sixth graders coming through seventh graders, where I'll take a math benchmark assessment, we do use the same math benchmark assessments in most schools now, but when we look at those assessments, we're comparing apples to apples versus apples to oranges. So we're hoping that this is going to help us to kind of identify when we get into the multi-tiered supports, that will help us identify what students need. We're looking for teachers to identify meaningful professional development opportunities that will improve high-quality instructional practices, so in the district improvement plan at the end, it says professional development to follow the agendas. What we have found as a district, and we've done this over the time that I've been there, professional development can't be on one side as well, particularly, you know, with special education, with math, with history, with science, we want to find professional development opportunities for our teachers that are going to help our teachers become more engaging and provide higher-order thinking on some of their content here, so obviously there's universal design, which applies to everybody, but to provide rare speech, language, OTP to special education teachers, we have pairs that work with students on the office as a partner, and we have teachers that work with general supports in the classroom, you can't provide the same professional development to that entire cohort, it has to be specific, specialized, professional development that we talk about as administrative team, so we're really excited to bring that into our purposeful instructional practices. Grades pre-K through twelve are working literacy consultants to improve instructional outcomes for all students, that's part of that wonders league, we're using study sync now from grades six through nine, it'll trickle up to through twelve, we do the instructors that have known through professional development in grades six through twelve, which will help that transition for students from sixth to seventh grade, so it'll be using study sync, once again, that's another grant that Madam Smola got for us. We're going to identify and implement high-quality instructional materials that support all students. So we're doing that with our ELA curriculum, now reading curriculum, we're going to start that shift to see what we can do with our math curriculum. We did, we were able to post for a math instructional coach through Title One funding that will help support that transition, once we start with the end math series that we think are going to be beneficial for our district. That math coach will not only support our elementary buildings, but will also help us identify some high-quality instructional materials that are supported by the state. So that's our core practice, a purposeful instructional practices, responsible parties are all staff and administration. Student support practices is an area where we've really dialed in on to start the school year, will provide student support and interventions informed by formal and informal data, that's where having that one common assessment for K through nine really helps, because it will dial in on what those interventions should look like, to establish a system of tiered interventions and supports that address the needs of each student. Key areas, effectively use data to place students in proper interventions, and monitor student progress and results, provide professional development opportunities for staff that support tiered interventions, so for those of you who work in education, Dr. Esposito has brought close-in training, the work of the opening hand training to the district, because we've had, when we look at some of our reading scores, an actual kit that our special education teachers have to work with students. Wilson and Morgan William are two highly recognized programs, Dr. Esposito has set up training, was it six staff that are going, Dr. Esposito?
There's four enrolled right now, and another that's getting enrolled.
So we have five staff that are enrolled in that, and ultimately, that'll lead to the multi-tiered support systems, as well as the services that we can provide through special education. Provide opportunities for small group instruction and interventions to support student learning across all content areas. Part of the wonders program at the elementary building is creating wind blocks, a wind block is what I need now, so we're using some of our Title One funding, Westbrookfield's going to hire one and a half interventionists, Warren will hire two interventionists, Title One interventionists through that Title One funding, which allows us, when we look at these multi-tiered levels of support, we can provide each student with what they need now, is a dedicated outdoor blocking to elementary building, and that kind of scaffolds what the students need, at what level, in order to provide those interventions through what the purpose of Title One is, which is awesome. Super happy for Principal Slattery and Principal Provost. Provide opportunities for small group instruction, we just talked about, utilize social, emotional, and/or mental health screenings to identify students at risk and recommend interventionists. We've been doing this through the DESA screening, which is at the elementary building, where students answer surveys, and it comes back as a green, a yellow, or a red, and any students that are threatening and identified is needing some additional supports, so we can couple all multi-tiered levels of support, it's just not the abbey notes, but it's sort of social, emotional, these series as well. At the middle high school, we'll all have the abbey notes, this will be our second year of abbey notes, that has some of those screenings already built into it, as well as some of that at college to career readiness pieces. So that's our student support practices, tiered interventions will result in student achievement and growth, and all staff and administration are responsible for that. Leadership practices, the QRS will establish a community practice for leadership, shared responsibility, and professional collaboration. Our Provost utilized grade level and leadership teams to support collaboration and professional learning among all staff. Our Provost increased participation and impact of instructional teams across all grade levels, utilize common planning time, professional learning communities, department time, data meetings, team time, and staff meetings to foster teacher and student growth, ensure scheduled time is allotted to all buildings for staff to collect, analyze, and share up data. That's a big part of having a common assessment system, it's good to get common assessments, but if you don't do anything with the data, then it's irrelevant, it's just an exercise. So we're making a dedicated effort to make sure that our staff have time to analyze, collect that data, and then make determinations on how we use that data, which will be extremely beneficial moving forward. Our evidence is effective school-based leadership teams, improvement in classroom and instruction, increase in student achievement. The one area that we left off of that one was, we do have a district-wide, so to say, shared leadership team with administration and union leadership, so we have dedicated time that we need with union leadership to have open and honest conversations about how they're doing. We do this through another grant, through Madam Smola, where we work with Ryan Ertman, and we do some workplace victories, so that we all know what our strengths and weaknesses are, and then we have those open conversations with union leadership, and we talk about how we can move forward, and what processes can be put in place that are going to help facilitate learning across students. So this will be. So this will be kind of our first full year of implementation, we tried it a little bit last year, but things with budget, I think things, things get a little sidetracked over after January. But this is an endeavor that we're committed to this year. For communication and collaboration, the QRC will enhance climate and culture that provides a high level of communication and collaboration that supports and celebrates student growth. To increase opportunities for all members of the school community, we engage in meaningful two-way communication. So once again, that's where those five weekly meetings with the towns come into place, our monthly newsletters, the events at the PTGs, PTOs, PTA's. All of those events that take place, our goal is to open two-way communication so that we can create better communication between all parties and all stakeholders. Key areas of improvement, increase the amount of school-wide events, clubs, and activities. Regular communications with families about student learning and performance, use of technology to facilitate communication to all stakeholders, whether it's through social media or the one call MOUTH system. Continue to work with outside partnerships to enhance collaboration among all stakeholders. Evidence is regular communication to families and members of the community, and increased opportunities for participation in school-wide events, which I think is super important. Like Dustin had said about having the student advisory council members here, I've spoken with Principal Slattery and Principal Provost, we do have sixth-grade leadership teams. How will we meet monthly with the sixth-grade leadership teams? And what I've asked them to do is work collaboratively between the two buildings, so we won't just have a two-hour NHS update at each school committee meeting. We'll have sixth graders in the building coming up and doing a model, so that we can share out that level of communication to the, to the community, so that we know it's not only your man, Cuero. But I think it's super important to notice someone on a venue, C S and then a B S. So thank you, Principal Slattery, Principal Provost, for helping to put that together. So that is our District Improvement Plan in a nutshell. I really am looking forward to creating a one-to-three-year plan next year. This will be the focus of teachers writing their goals, their goals will be reflective of the District Improvement Plan and the school group plan to be working based upon the District Improvement Plan. I hope you have questions?
I have a quick question, so I, I think I know the answer, but with the communication, the last part there, I know in the past that one of the segments we talked about standardizing the use of our school and making sure it's, it's at a grander level and love for everyone to see, is that, would that fall underneath that, that initiative?
I would, I would say that it has. Chris has put together a few tutorials for parents. I know that Casey had shared that information out at, at seventh grade or vacation, August twenty-third maybe, last week at some point. That's information that we want to be standardized across all grade levels because some people use it in the elementary building and some people like it on the power street. So it's important for us to have that information out to the parents and all that badness they have against us. I think Chris has done a nice job of that.
Cool, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions?
I also got the MAPS testing. I do have experience with that, and I think it's a wonderful tool. I know teachers I work with find it difficult giving up time during the year because it's three times during the year. But they have found that the data, I feel like they turn it around within a week and are very quickly using that data they found off that immediately in their organization of their classrooms, their organization of what interventions the students need. I think that's a wonderful tool for the district to be implementing and using.
Your leadership, our district leadership being given up a bad handle without saying that it's breaking, it was working ahead, and that equals that this is some significant progress.
Any other questions?
I just, I have a question actually on that. On the MAPS testing, what is the cost to the district on that? Because there is a cost associated with that.
There is, and we add that cost in by a lot, being part of our, our two-year grant, the cost is, was it twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars per year? We're looking at trying to do a multi-year deal, and there's some that actually do things for a three- to five-year period. They have a lot of the district that can purchase it for five years, you can, so here you discount for a five-year process, but they might just go back for five years as well. So that's something that got us, because we spare anyone hoping that she comes back with some.
Very good news, this would be.
So can I ask a follow-up question on that? So if it's grant-funded, how long, because it's great if we have MAPS testing for one year, but how long is that going to be able to be grant-funded?
Well, when we look at grant, grant-funded, care level for three to five years, so we usually have a different care level for some of the grants, but we use the process process. We also have an increase in student access here, so. Particularly, we love to see, so. I'm sorry, how do all the instructional materials, though Wonders is working for us to have an assessment system outside of the ones that we're using, so we can use that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We do need to vote on it, so I will entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Quavon Regional School District Improvement Plan. Second, and any further discussion? Full favor? Thank you, Mr. Duff. All right, public hearing period, opportunity for visitors, big statements, and or ask questions, anything that was in the agenda today?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ray Capaco, I'm the Warren resident. I, I believe Mr. Schwenker distributed a letter I had supplied him last month that I felt was important to address because it involved public statements that were made by me. So I'm just going to read it, just for, just so it's on the record publicly. It might be a little dated because this was last month, and so some of the references might not be completely accurate, but that's kind of beside the point. It was brought to my attention last month that at least one of the school committee members was offended at a comment I had made several months ago at a Warren Select Board meeting. The comment was made in the context of the use of Esser funds. I think I mistyped that in the letter, but that's okay. Use of Esser funds to cover normal budget expenses. And while I can't quote myself, I essentially stated that any sixth grader knows that you don't use one-time funds to cover ongoing budget items. This comment was not intended to be an insult to anyone's intelligence or educational background. It was intended as a figure of speech to indicate my opinion that the committee's decision was not a good one. Nevertheless, since it was explicitly stated that the remark was offensive, and given that it was made in public, I apologized and indicated that I would also apologize publicly at a committee meeting. So please accept my apology and regrets for any personal offense that anyone took from my comments. It is not really my desire to be derogatory to any individual in a personal way. I recognize that my emotions have made it all too easy to be excessively critical and will endeavor to express my thoughts in the future, especially when disputing, with a focus on the issue and not on any person or persons. Having said that, I would like to remind the committee and anyone acting in a public role of a fundamental principle regarding critiques and criticism of their performance in those roles. That is to be expect, that, and the principle is that it is to be expected to receive such critiques and criticisms as legitimate input and even value such opinions. A recent Supreme Court judicial, Massachusetts Supreme Court judicial case, court case Barron versus Kalenda affirms this principle. And the Massachusetts ACLU had a, I took an excerpt out of an article that I reference on the website. Says the following, "In a victory for free speech rights and core democratic principles, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, today, that was March seventh of this year, ruled that government officials cannot silence members of the public based on the substance of their input during public comment periods of government meetings. Specifically, the state's highest court ruled that civility codes that limit criticism of public officials are contrary to multiple provisions of the state constitution, which provide, quote, robust protection of public criticism of government officials. I bother to bring this to your attention with a desire that difficult discussions will be promoted, not for the sake of difficulty, of course, but for the, for the exchange of the ideas. That all parties involved in such discussions will endeavor to hear difficult things and not just the pleasant ones. Having said that, I once again apologize for any offensive remarks I have made. I want to say thank you to the person for being willing to say something to me directly, and I will commit to doing better going forward." That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Slattery? Just like to take this opportunity to publicly thank a few organizations and a few people that donated their time and efforts to install a new playground, new swing set over at Warren Community Elementary School over the past two Sundays. So it starts first and foremost with the fundraising opportunities that we have at our school. That's through the PTO, so the PTO did a remarkable job in getting the funds to purchase the swing set. It came to our knowledge that last fall. We had two swing sets and we had like sixty kindergarteners, and kindergarten has a dedicated playground and we wanted more swing sets, so that was brought to the PTO. They used their funding ways to finance the swing sets. And then the swing sets show up and then we need help, right? So, you know, we continue to call on the people for that help that have that expertise, so publicly I'd like to thank J&amp;J Contractors, specifically Larry Bronner and Zach Cludier for their help with getting the heavy equipment in, moving some stone, prepping the surface. Summit Fence came over with Shane Millier with the post auger to dig the three holes. Wouldn't you know it, that every hole that we attempted to dig had some pretty big cobbles. So the two-hour job that we thought was going to be on Sunday turned into about seven hours. It just came away from their families, but it was an awesome, awesome effort collectively. So publicly, I'd like to thank Tyler Goodfield, Shane Millier, Summit Fence, J&amp;J Contractors, and Chad Goodrow. So Chad Goodrow is the husband of one of our kindergarten teachers for their remarkable efforts. If you have any questions, I'll add.
I think that's a, a great sentiment as to what makes Warren Community Elementary School a true community elementary school is, is the ability to, to have people come and, and donate their time and everything. I know when the, when the initial playground was put in, I was part of that group as well as a bunch of members of the school committee at that time, and that was.
As memories as you think.
Many, 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 many hours. And I think the same thing, I think they hit big giant ledge every hole they dug. All right, thank you, Mr. Slattery. Anybody else? We do not have to go into executive session, so I will entertain one more motion. Dustin, motion, second in all favor? Thank you, everybody.